We're ready to start the practice. We're creating towards the standard of the legal reason to use any other case.
Let's see. Let's do five. The United States of America and to the Republic of America stands one nation on my behalf in doing all that is necessary for justice.
You got me this day with us. Great that you would bless me today, also bless the residents. I want everybody to stay healthy. Your name and then.
Okay, I'll start the roll call. President Moore.
Here.
Alex Kennedy.
Here.
Yvonne Belichick. Here. Jennifer Swack.
Here. John Hawkins.
Here.
And then for the record, myself, Lori Zelnuck and Treasurer Judy Burst are in attendance.
Welcome, Bill.
Hi, Yvonne.
Welcome.
Go right into the agenda.
Right, so what you're going to do is you're going to say that.
What can I say? I'm sorry, go for the minutes.
Yeah, we're going to ask if anybody's had an opportunity to review the minutes.
All right. Anybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from the last meeting of November 24?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from January meeting.
I will support.
I'm sorry.
Can we have all the favor, both reach?
All the favor?
Aye. A vote. Hearing done. Motion's approved. We're going to be a genuine for both. This is for last month's meeting?
It's tonight.
Thank you, Janet.
I would like to add, I'm guessing, I'll just say new business is solar, only because I have a couple of comments to make, and it was a solar energy and battery storage.
Survey.
Something like that, yeah. Solar energy and battery storage. Okay. So do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I will support.
All the favor say aye.
Aye.
A vote. Hearing done. Motion's carried. Going to the treasurer's report.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented.
I'll sign it.
Get rid of the minutes. Oh, never mind, we aren't, yeah, we aren't. Not this. Open third.
Can I ask for a roll call please, motions from the treasurer's report?
Absolutely. Kennedy?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Belichick?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
So motion carries.
That brings us down to accounts payable.
Skip ahead. I will make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of general $8,070.15, major $4,966.43, local $16, and parks and more recreation $48.
I'll score.
Okay, we're going to roll call.
Can we roll all on that, please?
Okay. Sure. Swack?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Belichick?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Do you need public comment at this time? Okay, thank you for that comment.
Just wait.
We'll see. We'll see. We're going to new business. And we don't, I don't have a lot right now, I'm just getting started, but one thing that came up when I was at the Pontiac, I keep saying Pontiac, Pontiac Trail meetings, I was asked if we were going to have any nature improvements to the nature park this year. So I had started talking, actually, and we're talking about a few things that might make some sense to make it more better, some seedings, more seeding, we don't have, or things like that. Do you have any ideas to pass on this so when you get a schedule, we get moving on some work this summer in the park? That's just an informational thing. So any ideas to make it better for people that want to go there, want to take an interest in the park?
A place that has a ton of families, they're not, other than the school, there's no process there on the premises.
Yeah.
But not a lot of legal stuff involved, like a kid falls off a gear.
Oh, for playgrounds of some sort?
Yeah, just like a small, even just reduced swings or something that's small.
And I think right now you're not even able to get back into the school. I think that, yeah, it's locked out now, you can't get back there to just.
You have to go into the parking lot around.
That's still open though.
Yeah. Are there picnic tables at the major parks?
No, there is not. I don't, there's benches.
Picnic table might be something of interest, something to consider.
I think it was last year. This is a mat?
There's a mat one that's sitting right down there.
We're sitting up one each launch.
Yeah. There is a mat one toward the front and the left-hand side as you're facing the park.
Yeah.
Yes, there is one there. There isn't a whole lot else, but I'm not quite sure what improvements we would want to do, just because we paid all that money for the park plan, which we will start rolling out, and so I'm just not quite sure, like, you know, if that's something that they broke down in phases, that will start to do. So there might be something, you know, that we all need to lay our eyes on quickly is see.
The park plan?
The park plan.
If you have the park plans, I started studying them first week.
Did you? Okay, so yeah, let us know if you see if there was like a phased rollout of how we're to approach things, or if we can do something like that. Because I honestly, I can't speak to having any knowledge on it.
Does the village park have a meeting?
There's a committee.
They do have a committee, and I feel like this month meeting is.
They do have a committee?
Mm-hmm.
That's news to me, so I'll have to find out who they are and get with them.
Linda and Doug know we're here.
I don't know.
Right, and I believe that Linda and Doug are maybe not going to make this month.
You're not telling them?
Yeah. So this month might have been canceled. But, you know, this time of year we can't do a whole lot anyway, so we could parlay this. They did do one of that. I have an email from Linda.
Okay, so I'm ready, if I got to schedule anything for moving any birds or anything like that.
Sure, sure.
So some of the schedules I had, I included in your.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got a couple of them.
I feel like they said that.
That's basically all I have.
The January meeting was going to be, I thought they said for them, but I could be mistaken, but it's something that we revisit next meeting.
Yeah, I requested anybody to send, and I did actually send that to you. And Bill, there was nothing from the attorney that you.
Thank you. So let's move on to the Pontiac Trail. They're going to repave about three miles of the trail on the west side of town this year, starting at, I think it goes back to Curtis Road, I'm not sure, but there's a swamp area back there, but it doesn't hold up very long, so they're going to redo that as soon as the weather breaks. It's going to take about three weeks that that area is going to be shut down.
Did you say three miles?
About three miles in total is what they're going to repave, redo.
Is that what all that dirt's for?
That's 400 tons of slags in it.
We figured it was for the trail.
And now that, travel trains carry 50 tons of trucker.
I kept watching them come in thinking, wow, they doing that part a lot down there, but that was a lot of dirt. More than, more than that for the parking lot.
I didn't feel like sitting down in the hole waiting on them truckers just coming in, I gave my dispatcher my numbers and just call me up in my house. I brought them.
They're close.
That's awful. And the other thing is, Pontiac Trail, in your fact, you'll notice that there are no meetings at Roland Hall this year, and they are going to a five-month meeting. So about only meet six times this year, they're not being here. It's been so long, and you'd have now your solar.
Yeah, the solar energy, I got an email from the village, the, somebody, I can't remember whose face, I think it was the company, was looking to, they were looking for ordinances, zoning, moratoriums for solar power and battery storage, and this was not for a personal home, this was large scale. So my question back to her was, why Leonard? But she's looking at it from another purpose, the state, she, she's just been given an area and told to research to see what's out there. So I didn't want to respond yet without really maybe including Addison, because I think she's getting the village, she's getting Leonard as a name, like we all do, which is huge on the map, but really that's Addison. So I figured we should probably talk to Addison and see, I didn't see anything on their site either that was ordinances or anything like that, but I figured together we should, I serve this lady, not separately. I think she's looking at the bigger picture of Addison. The only person.
Who's not even moved in Leonard's.
Well, and that's like, that's why I figured she wasn't looking at Leonard, she was looking at Addison.
And I think you responded to her with that. If I saw in the email thread, didn't you say?
I, I just asked her, it's too big, too high.
You know, just in case, you know, you might have misled by like.
Yes.
The size of Leonard.
Because there's a coat of water comes out this whole sticker thing, and it's.
Sure.
Really not all Leonard.
Right, and she can get our ordinances online.
She did. I think she did get that. She was looking for anything that was extra that we might have had, which I didn't see anything. I don't know anymore. I didn't know if we should contact the attorney, and I didn't want to ask because it was another question I'm there to get built for.
That might be a question for planning.
I think it's a question for us to, you know, there's other things that have come up since, that we need to bring up to our consultant there.
Right.
And explaining to them.
Right.
And I think that maybe we could bulk it all together to, to share with her.
Okay, and that's a good idea.
Just to see consultant, it comes to planning needs?
No. We only, it's as needed basis, and most of the time, most of the items that we're discussing, like for example right now, we're just revamping, doing a five-year review of the master plan, which isn't a redo at all, it's really just making some small changes and updates, some things that have happened in the last five years. But when we do need her, there is one little thing that we're going to need her for, that we pay them as needed. So when this next little thing comes up after we've been able to kind of have a conversation about it. But anything we discuss, generally we will bring it back to council, and then council, you guys will approve it. We don't really have that kind of authority to just say, we're going to do things. So whatever we discuss, we bring to you, you guys discuss it, and then it goes to the next level of having her do the work. So it doesn't look bad, but that's.
I'd like to come over and see what's happening.
Okay.
I also am getting a call from somebody that is a consultant.
We. Okay, we've already hired her, so we're, we're good to go.
Yeah.
And she is. It is.
I wish she even had an interview about who to hire, and she's already hired.
She probably just wanted to touch base with me because she used to talk with Mike, so.
Right.
She was probably just looking to talk.
And she's wondering.
Is there anybody in Addison that I should share this email with? Everybody that I can think of in Addison, should I just give it to Bruce?
I would give it to Bruce.
Okay, and just see if they have an appointment, like that probably gets together.
Right.
Because they may need to add something to their stuff, too. I don't want to, I don't want to blindside them, so.
I noticed most everything that we get is already filtered through them. So we might even know how they're managing it if we give them a call.
Okay. I'll stop here and check out.
All right.
That concludes new business, then?
Yep.
We're good on that, let's go to old business. Water, road grader, unfortunately, when I called asking about it today, that they were heading to the hospital with them, so I don't know what's going on there, so I have nothing to report on that. Leonard drains down in your office till tomorrow, so he's gone for a whole holiday until then, so I'm sorry I couldn't bring anything to you for that. Storm drains are the catch bases, you know, we've done pretty much the whole east side of the village, this summer I plan on doing the west side of the village, so we'll have all the basins done in this two years, so going forward we should be in great shape, we'll know exactly where our problems are.
This summer, you say?
Summer. Yes, they don't come, they can't work in the fall and in the spring, you don't want to work because it's too wet.
Sure.
And they would fill up their truck, they suck all that water and all that water, everything out of the storm bases, and they would fill that truck up so fast that.
Gotcha.
It would get very far.
Makes sense.
Okay.
They need to wait for it to dry or.
Is there a recent contract with?
With, yeah, ten-year, we're a ten-year contract with Oak County.
I think we're in years.
I think two.
Three. I think we've done it two years.
There's one thing I don't like about it, is we pay a lot of time for them to be on the road rather than out here working, so we don't get a lot of work done for what we pay for. We only get them two days a year.
Which is all we've ever done. That's all we've ever done.
Yeah, so I don't know how you can improve on that. Except that I created, I got a map for them with all the locations, all the basins, I got a big spout on it to make a better map, and then I flagged it. When you're gone, this town was a lot bigger walking it than it ever thought it was.
Get your steps in, Bill.
You got a lot of steps in that day, about two days. So we, we have a problem with the brakes, I've already ended the DPW update, and this came up this past weekend. We're going to have to replace the air tanks, it's, they're air brakes, so we're going to have to replace the air tanks, the wells are letting loose on the tanks. I know one well is cracking, the rest of our parking lot, so we might, we got to take one tank off, we might as well get, to get to the other tank, we might as well replace them both now.
So the air tanks did what?
The weld seam, it's a welding tank, and the seams are cracking, welds are hitting out, and they're leaking.
Do we know?
Now, as long as the tank fills, you've got pressure to reduce the brakes.
Do we know how much horsepower do we need out?
I got a quote for, right down to about $13.80 on parts, but I got to find a mechanic, we lost our mechanic.
Did he know he was not going to do it?
He's not, we lost him, he gave us a number for another mechanic, that mechanic doesn't want to do it. So I ran into Kurt, I knew he was up here working on a vehicle, and I wasn't going to ask him, he's going to get with Don, talk to Don about it, maybe I can talk Kurt into just doing this one thing for us. Kurt's not opposed to doing the village, he doesn't like, when we went to Diesel, engines and stuff, he doesn't like diesel, he doesn't hold time for it. So that was why he quit working for us on the village, he don't give a reason. He just didn't want to do that.
So then $16.80 in parts?
14.
13.80?
Oh, 13.
You know, you got to, you're looking at, what, $9,000 bucks an hour for a mechanic to come off, so we're probably going to hit two grand on that, on that figure when we get to it.
So we just should probably make a motion, yeah, to approve, I would see so much money.
Do you want to do that now? We can make a motion for $2,000 to repair the air brakes on the truck.
I'd like to make a motion to approve up to $2,200 for repairing the air brakes, something better up.
I'll second that.
That way we can put it on, if we can't find a mechanic.
Do they have to be, could I do it? I don't know if he's interested, I don't know. I don't know if they have to be labeled a mechanic with a license, because he doesn't have that anymore, but he did, I don't know, I should ask him.
We need to handle the brakes, so we'd like to replace his mechanic, I think.
I'll ask him, let's see. That's why I'm asking, I didn't know, I figured he probably needed licensed, but I'll ask him. See if he's still under scale next.
Insured now?
Yeah, he's got to be insured, because it's a liability for the village, so.
Right. So I'll go ahead and do a roll call then.
I'll be liable for things.
Motion? Okay, Kennedy?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Belichick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Let's go into the president's report. I have no Freedom of Information Act to report out there right now.
Well, I think we do.
We do?
You want to take this one, Judy?
Well, well, because what's coming on is the property, the 4285, that's up for sale, they put in their little ad to contact the village regarding that, so we've been kind of asking anybody who's contacted to send it as a FOIA request, and then we respond to them by email, and there's probably been close to 10 calls that have come through on that problem.
Oh, that's, so, and just to kind of expand on that, I know that Judy and Jennifer are on the loop with this, and maybe, maybe are somewhat too. As soon as it went up, which was about a month ago, we were getting flooded with calls, it was ridiculous, and so I reached out to the lawyer, and I said, I'm not really sure how to handle this, because the listing is misleading, the pictures are very old from when the home was not destroyed, and they're just saying basically, well, we don't really have any information on the property, so reach out to the village. Well, you know, he said, because it's a matter of public record, the hearing that we had for dangerous building and the findings are all a matter of public record, so he said, make sure that it's posted on the house, which it is, right outside the door, you'll see it's got the dangerous building, and it says that this property is planned to be demolished on that piece of paper, and it's actually covered in plexiglass, so it can't be destroyed. And then we've just been directing them that if they send us an email request, as in like official FOIA, you know, explain what you're asking for, and then we'll go ahead, just because we're trying to keep it legal. You know, everybody just wants this really quick verbal thing, and we're just not going to do it if they want it, it has to be done that way, and just a lot of people just look at, so that's how they're getting it, and then, you know.
We sent them a copy of the court order, dangerous building, and we sent them a copy of all.
Of the findings.
Awesome.
So, and the lawyer was very specific when I just said, you know, is, people keep asking me about different potential, like, options, asking us to tell them what the options are, and he said, let them know emphatically, we plan to continue and follow through with the results of the dangerous building hearing, which is just demolition of the property. We feel it cannot be rehabbed, it can't be rehabbed. And so, but a lot of people just aren't really, they think we're being difficult.
There's a lot that people will rehab that you can't imagine that they're even begin to rehab. The pictures I think have been updated, they look a little bit, not as, they're not as pretty anymore, they're a little bit, I mean, I can see a water line now in the basement, like, there's photos of the basement, there's photos of the room that has a hole in the roof, showing, you know, lots of damage. Everybody's going to be looking for a way to get around it. I had a local guy named John Wayne come out, he does demolition, and he quoted approximately 19 to 20,000 for the demo on that. I should have an actual proposal written up, I just need to make sure that, you know, just be very specific, as specific as you can, that way, if somebody does buy the property and we want some kind of escrow held, I think it should be that 20,000. That way if they don't go through with it, then we have the finances to just cover it. It's up for auction, they lowered the price, it hasn't, I mean, you're probably going to see people walk through it because it is a low price, it is a little county, and it is a big house, so we're going to flock to it.
Sure.
What's the price?
They lowered it then. I think it's 65, or 63 now, but it was something, it was something like that.
I wish they could still put more accurate photos on there, just for the reason that the photos are part of a public record. And, you know, the, the photos show there's three feet of water in the basement, but yet they're showing the old photo where there's no water in the basement, and there's a water line.
Sure.
A little solid. Sure, but it's just very deceiving, and then kind of dumping it on us, because people are encouraged to think, hey, this house looks like it could be fixed, they're missing all the black mold, and.
And that's, when you rehab, you have to assume those, that, those are all, okay, so when I see a water line, I know that there's been water here. Okay. I, I'm looking for crunchy carpet in the corners, and I'm looking for, you know, wood that's, I'm looking for all the signs, so everybody who walks through this knows. The part that I have a problem with is, I know that there's a hole in there, and there should be, the listing should say, take precautions, sign a document first, wear a mask, be careful, you could fall, this is danger, like, it should say all those things. And now that's on there.
Right.
They're down to 64.9. Okay. And it is up for auction, not just for sale, so they are looking for more than that or.
And how does up for auction?
I would assume it because water sat so long, it should be assumed, but is the black mold dead now? Possibly, if there's no water in the basement, it could be dead. There's no food for black mold, it doesn't live, so.
So what do they do? Do they go through the seller's agent to bid on it in the auction?
Oh, there's a, there's a website that you go to.
There is, okay, because initially it looked like it was a sale.
It looks like a sale, yes, and then in the, what the public sees, you don't see this auction, what I see is the auction in, but announced with the agents, which again, to me is deceiving.
How much property is that?
I think it's a rounded acre, a little bit less than, you know, something like that. I don't know, I don't know what they've got posted.
The order was in fact that we have it posted on every entrance into the house, every exit. We have it posted on every.
Do we have the two doors?
They, I didn't think, I didn't think, I didn't think the other, the one door was usable. I didn't think that any of the other doors you could even use, so.
Which everyone has a lock box on it, is the one that they're going to.
Okay, well, that's the one.
If there's a lock box, they have to stand there and they have to, to the lock box, and if they're not looking up, then.
I don't know, I haven't been over to the lock, but we did post it, we told them, yeah, we posted the doors, and so I just told them, I told them, go over and take another look at it.
I'll send you, I can, I can forward it to John if he would like to see it, the, I took a picture of it after I posted it. Somewhere.
He can hold me today either. He's got the draft under the resolution before the purchase agreement, he was supposed to send that out, apparently he can do that.
Lock box?
We have it tonight.
Posting. Yeah, so.
We'll approve that and send it back to him.
Yes, it's posted right next to the lock.
Yeah, but they, they're going to walk up and see it then.
I mean, they can't miss it, and then we also, like I said, we pick up the tape and then we highlight it, but that's just on the two, just.
So the other door doesn't work? Unless you can't, you can't get in, or?
It's, I, I mean, they've always, anytime the house has been listed, it's always that back door that you went into. I should say always, I've always been.
Can Sherry get me a list of the ones?
It's structured, we, we wouldn't have this one.
We just have this far, and then a team, a builder, you know, it was a builder's store, you know, that's independent of all of us, went over and said, you know, I mean, they said, this is not structural sound, and I, with a bottle of water, that's it, with the septic that they were using, with the, who knows?
You can look at it from side.
The hole in the roof that I've seen for a long, long time.
Do they, if they, if another company or somebody gets it and sort of fixes it up and rents it, do they have to let you people know, I hope?
They can rent it.
They can.
There's only one thing that can happen with that property because of the results of the dangerous building meeting, and that is that it's demolished. End of story, they're not fixing it.
It's the way of being sold, you have to demolish it, you can't ruin it else.
I'm glad to know that.
And I'm sure if somebody, you saw somebody buy it, and then you saw regulations of any sort on it, it would go straight to the attorney and straight to the courts.
But do, do they have to let you know if the rotten property here?
Technically, yes.
Yes, okay, okay. I just don't wanna see that again. I don't want a company coming in here that could get a rip less.
Right, right, and they're responsible.
Oh, yeah.
That, that's the only ordinance, fortunately, we have on that house, right?
It is cold. I mean, that's as strong as it gets to just demolish it.
So we're done to our, uh, block grant reports. I would have any reports on block grants.
I actually have a report of that. So the twenty-twenty-four funds, I always have a report on block grant, I sometimes do. Uh, the twenty-twenty-four funds are going to be released. There is going to be a document that's gonna be emailed to the village that you need to sign. You are the highest elected official, and you need to say, yep, okay, I'm receiving and accepting this, and then we'll go ahead, and that'll be like official that those funds are ours, so, um.
So where do they, do they just do an account from that?
Ish, an account, it's not even really an account, because we spend the money, and then they reimburse us after I jump through a few loops.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that money after they mail?
The twenty, well, it takes a year.
Right.
So the twenty-twenty-four money is being released, so you should give her, um, an email.
See, I got a report that shows zero money out there.
Okay.
Do we have any old money out there?
Um, let me take a, I'll have to call back to somebody.
Okay, you just report, I thought, what?
Okay. Because the twenty-twenty-four money is about to be released. They did say, if we didn't spend it, we were losing it, they were gonna oink it. And so that could have very well happened, but all, then if that's the case, all we'll have going forward will be the new money that's being released, which is twenty-twenty-four.
We need to talk about, um, youth assistance.
Okay.
Because we'll be only changing.
Okay.
And we have identity, CP, BG, request.
Yep.
It's such a natural question, man.
I'll bite, yes.
I did, I did get a request for something we do every year with the youth league, we support them with five hundred dollars a year. I am, it's already in the budget, right?
Correct.
We'll be sending that out again this year.
What's the youth?
Youth assistance.
Oh, youth assistance, okay. Is that something we're doing this meeting, or no?
No.
Oh, oh, just the budget, oh, okay.
Bill's just bringing it up.
Oh, okay.
We just do it every year.
Okay, no, I was, uh.
See, why didn't Bill bring it up, was that he got a letter from youth assistant requesting the money?
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
But it's, it's in the budget.
Understood.
So let's go ahead to the trustee and committee reports.
Any ordinance?
We, as, the way we were talking about the house, this is the only thing we've got, we're already talking, discussed it.
Okay.
So I think we'll just slip past that one.
Okay. Well, as far as summer festival goes, usually the grant procedures opened up in January each year. Although I have retired from, um, being on the committee, I might just send them an email reminding them that, um, Oakland County Grant opens in January.
Who writes that grant?
I have, it's really easy.
Oh, it's amazing also.
Yeah, it's really, it's one of the few that's actually like really easy, yeah.
Okay.
Are we gonna be, that's a lot.
Cable Commission?
Yeah, are we gonna be last night? So we should be meeting then, then the slot.
Decorating committee, uh? I bet you think Council and Decorating Committee might wanna, wanna think about the park enhancements too. If there's something, they could come up with some ideas, you could be, just to throw us to, uh, give us some ideas of what we could do and make it better.
Okay.
You could put a fence up, so they don't crunch on our property.
Wasn't that part of the plan? So you guys have a right to work for decorating, which is, was it, is it part of the plan?
I hope so.
It is part of the plan. I thought it was bad, it's part of the plan, yeah, it was part of the, yeah, overall plan.
Good to know. That's bad. So nobody's bothering the horse, nobody's coming on our property, nobody jumps on the pond and drowns.
That's weird, okay, I didn't understand, Mike talked to me about a fence, and I didn't, and I thought I was on the easement for buying to go through there for a, for a walk, we need to park.
Now, that's still up there too. Well, I'm just telling you, I'm not gonna let it go.
North Oakland Transportation Authority, I did go to that meeting. Um, the only, the new thing, uh, they, they went and hired a new, um, accounting firm. That was pretty much suggested to me and the other a lot of others. So that's all I'm gonna talk about of that is.
Do you see us going to all of those, or do you want to help with some of those?
Well, I can, I can do with this, but I, I'm, I'm gonna talk about this a little bit at the end here real quick.
Okay.
Yes, not nothing else to do.
Sorry.
If you keep coming across, it's got to your mind.
We don't have to go that far.
And the planning commission report.
We will need to meet this month, I think.
Do they wanna meet this, or February?
Or, I mean, honestly, just because things are a little bit hectic in my life right now, I would prefer to do it in, no, I would prefer to do it in February, only because we do have some stuff to cover.
And do we have Bill here, or is he out of town?
Um, I, I think that, uh.
Not Bill, Doug.
You know, that's gonna be, well, shoot.
I guess I should, did, did, did you ask?
I think that they're gonna be out of town. Hold on, hold on, you know what? Let, can we just say February, because I think they're already, I think they're already gone.
And I'm fine with that, so February is our fourth meeting, we need four here.
We have to do it.
So we have to do February.
Here's the thing, we may meet, but we may not have a forum, and we may not be able to solve some problems that need to be solved at our meeting.
But we could do some maps and stuff like that.
We could.
We did find out that Judy had a.
Let's do that, let's do the February meeting then, so.
All right, so I'm gonna make motion to cancel the January sixteen planning commission meeting. Six. We can just do an all-in-fair. I'll call out all-in-fair.
All-in-fair?
Aye.
All's. Here you go. Motion carrying. Holly and Management, Trail Management Council, we've already talked about that, about them repaving three, um, miles of, uh, trail, and they're not going to meet here at the hall that's coming here. So the village park, we did talk about the village park a little bit too. I have nothing further to add to that. We get down to the community development block grants, and we've been discussing that too, so we're gonna.
Right, so the twenty-twenty-four money, um, there should be an email coming through, and you will need to sign that.
Okay.
So, might be up there, yep, so it's like an end-user agreement, recipient agreement or something like that, I think. Okay. Do you have any correspondence aside from the ninety million, um, requests about that property? Nope. Okay, so this is where we're at.
First I wanna talk to you guys for just five quick minutes. We're gonna adjourn this meeting at, uh, seven thirty-six.
Like we can motion probably at ten thirty-six.
Second.
It's only, but the bridge still on.
All-in-fair?
Aye.
Aye. opposed. Motion carrying, that is me.